Joining the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, we're going to call a roll, please.
Gingerfay?
Here.
Deanna Swires?
Here.
Sarah James?
Here.
Frankie Schwartz?
Here.
Cash Snyder?
Here.
Rich Barton?
Here.
And Carolyn Franks?
Here.
We have a call. Thank you. I'm going to entertain a motion to amend or adopt the agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Go ahead, Jen. Okay. There's a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We had a little discussion in the president's workshop that I went to at the MSBA conference about board norms. And some people had no norms at all. And they were copying, they were copying each other's then. But I told them that I thought we had been doing really well in sticking to our norms. They're there and you can always point one out if somebody feels we're not sticking to the norms. But I do appreciate you all for being very professional in meetings and doing that. And that brings us to recognitions.
Yes, so we have recognized two students tonight who've qualified for state across country. It's quite the honor and we're really proud of them. Like, it's really a great thing and a ton of hard work and talent goes into that. So we just want to congratulate them and tell them how proud we are and how wonderful it is. So with us, we've got Matt Craven, but I don't see Alexis here. So, yeah, so Matt, you want to come on up? We'll get a picture. And Mom, you want to come on up too? And we'll get pictures, we'll send it out and just say congratulations.
Congratulations. We're proud of you. Standing here for him in photo.
I was reading the newspaper and apparently it was raining during the raid.
And he had pneumonia.
I saw that too.
Yes, please.
So way to go and overcome. Yeah, the newspaper articles like these kids had over gone.
Very good.
Yeah, I actually had diagnosed with pneumonia the Wednesday before and we were like, not really sure. So we just pumped them full of drugs. Like the warrior way. Go into the battle.
Thank you for representing us well.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Do we have any patron comments, Stacy? Okay, so we are ready for superintendent reports. It looks like we meet Janelle first because it's IC Summer School and then Latchkey and Care Day and, you know, all those things.
I'm everything.
You help us with.
Everything.
Yes.
I'm presenting with you.
Oh, yes.
I used to give this presentation. I used to give this presentation.
Oh, yeah. So.
It's on the board, yeah?
My first one to start off giving a recap of the 2024 summer school and this time the program evaluation. So last summer, we offered kindergarten through eighth grade. We had district-created curriculum in math, science, ELA, art, music, PE, and technology. In the ninth through 12th grade, we offered credit recovery, high school physical education, health, personal finance, foundations of art, and then pre-Missouri options for Alpha students. With our finances, in 2024, we had a revenue of $647,000. Six hundred forty-seven, six, sorry, I'm so sorry. Six hundred thousand, six hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars. Supplies, we spent a little over $5,000. Gift cards, we paid out $44,587.70. And our staffing cost was $368,796.90, bringing in a total revenue of a little over $229,000, which was up from the 2023 summer school when we had a revenue of $185,000. Our enrollment was very similar to the 2023. We had 522 kindergarten through fifth grade students. Sixth through eighth grade, we had 159. In our high school, ninth through 12th grade, we had 229, for a total of 910 students. And our ADA was 89.5. Our ADA for the 2023 summer school was 90.1, so very similar. Our summer enrichment camps, we had an increase. We were at 199 students this summer. The summer enrichment camps are the three weeks after summer school where we offer half-day camps. The only change from last summer. I wrote a grant and we were able to get grant funding to have afternoon care from 11:15 to 3:15, which in the parents' eyes made it a full-day camp. So the morning, we were able to turn that in to DESI, accounts to our ADA. But then in the afternoon, the grant funding paid for staffing supplies. We had field trips and we were able to keep the kids for the rest of the day. So we were up for 199 students from 116 the year before. And we also offered, we had one section of our kickoff to kindergarten. This was our first year offering it. We had 19 students, 19 kindergartners, so it was pretty busy for that week, too. And then kind of a breakdown of our summer enrichment camps. We offered elementary STEM, PE, art, robotics, and then the kickoff to kindergarten. And then middle school, we had art, PE, middle school STEM, and then the middle school summer safety. The first week was a hunter safety course. The second week was a kitchen safety. And then the third week was a technology kind of safety week. So we kind of switched that one up a little bit. And then our proposed goals for our 2025 summer school looking ahead. We would like to increase learning opportunities for students during summer school, increase our student enrollment and average daily attendance, and increase revenue for summer school. So what we're looking for this year is kindergarten through fourth grade. We'd like to offer it at Warrior Ridge Elementary. Fifth through eighth grade would be at Blackhawk Middle School. Ninth through 12th grade would be at the High School and Alpha Academy. And the dates would be June 9th through July 10th, Monday through Thursday. So that's always a little bit different in the summer. And then no school on June 19th and July 3rd. Again, we'd offer the same offerings that we offered last summer in kindergarten through eighth grade and also ninth through 12th grade. And I would like to propose again doing our summer school gift cards as the gift card incentives. Kindergarten through eighth grade, offering $100 prepaid gift card for students. They could miss up to one day, which is 7.08 hours. $75 gift card if they missed or over the 7.808, up to two days. And then the $50 gift card for up to three days missed. And then after summer school of our 18 days of summer school, offering summer enrichment camps, which would begin on July 14th through July 31st. And those would be housed at Rebecca Boone. And elementary, we'd offer STEM, PE, art, robotics, and then again, the kindergarten readiness, the kickoff to kindergarten. And then in middle school, the STEM enrichment, summer safety, art, and PE.
More questions? Do you think the, there was quite an increase in enrollment in the enrichment? Do you think it was, I know it was partly because of the kindergarten readiness, but do you think some of it had to do with the fact that the kids could stay all day?
I think they all, I think that was the big factor, is being able to stay all day.
Right, because parents didn't have to pick them up in the middle of the day or find another place for them to go.
Yes.
Did, did everyone stay?
We had, there was only about 20 on average that dismissed at 11.
So most, most of them took advantage of that?
Yes, yes. And that was kind of the last minute. They offered the grant and we really didn't find out we got the grant until May or so. So that was like, enrollment was already out, so I sent another thing to the parents and said, surprise, congratulations. We are offering this if you'd like to take us up on it. And we did, we had a lot of fun. We visited Big Joel's Safari. We went to the Aquatic Center. They did some water safety lessons for the kids and those kind of things, so.
Is it being offered again this year or is that something we can see type?
Right now, what I'm, excuse me, what I'm proposing is the half-day and then kind of waiting to see. It was ARPA funding through the Missouri After School Network was who offered the grant. So.
Yeah, wait and see.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
See if it's offered again.
You're the, like, the grant guru. You're like, and then this grant, and then this amazing opportunity.
You've done a really good job.
I do enjoy finding the grants, but it's fun.
All right. I would like to compliment you because, I mean, I, we have a lot of great things going on in our district, but I love talking about the job that you've done with our programs that you're in charge of. I appreciate that and it's fun to talk about you.
Thank you very much. I really enjoy it. And then, welcome back. Here we go. I'd like to talk a little bit about our after-school program evaluation, which is Latchkey and Care Day. So our goal, the district will increase partnerships between businesses in the community and students by May of 2025. That was our CSIP goal. Latchkey, I'll talk about that first. Latchkey's a program that provides before and after-school care for district students in kindergarten through eighth grade. We operate from the hours from 5:30 in the morning till 7:40 when school starts and then again from 3:15 till 6:00 PM. Right now, we currently have six staff members. We have two in each of the elementary buildings, Rebecca Boone, Daniel Boone, and Warrior Ridge. And then we do have a few middle school students and they come down to Daniel Boone and join the Daniel Boone site. During Latchkey, we offer a broad array of activities, STEM-based lessons, outdoor play, academic homework help, hands-on crafts games, and problem-solving skills. This year, again, just like last year, we offer a 4-H spin club during our Latchkey. So once a month, Maureen from the Extension Center comes over and we have our own 4-H club at each of the buildings. And then those students are then, get a chance to join some of the other arts and crafts nights and the, and the different club nights that some of the 4-H clubs house. So this Latchkey is offered in all buildings and then they have the opportunity to join 4-H during Latchkey programming time, which again helps the families select. They may not have time after Latchkey, so they're getting that feel during the Latchkey program. And if the students attend so many of the Latchkey meetings, they have the opportunity to enter their projects that could create a Latchkey in the Warren County Fair. This year, we were a wise grant recipient for Latchkey. Each Latchkey site received the grant. And through the grant, we were gifted solar power kits to focus on our STEM and an online STEM teaching subscription that we've been using on a monthly basis with the students. Our current enrollment for all three sites is 176, up a little bit from last year, but taking a pretty big jump from 2020 when, when I was able to start the position, 140 students up to 176. So, and our biggest sites are Warrior Ridge and Daniel Boone. They have our highest attendance. This is our average daily attendance in the morning. We usually only have one staff member in the morning just because our numbers are low. So Rebecca Boone, 4, 3, 3, Daniel Boone, 7, 8, and 9. And Warrior Ridge is our highest with 16, 17, and 17. And sometimes that ranges up from 20 to 23, down to nine. It just kind of depends on the day and the weather, too. And then our afternoon sites, our sessions, we have Rebecca Boone is in the twenties, Daniel Boone is 33, 35, 38, and then Warrior Ridge is about that, right in the mid-thirties. Our revenue, we have a working budget of $144,935.91. And the revenue is the same, total revenue was zero. Latchkey expenses, that is again a zero. And some of that SAC grant money helps to cover the costs of the staffing for our Latchkey staff as well. So that's kind of why you're not seeing a real influx there. And then on Care Day, the Warren County R3 School District Care Day program was developed when we started the four-day school week during the 1920s school year. The program is here to support the needs of our working parents in the community as we strive to provide a safe and supportive environment that encourages social, emotional, physical, and intellectual growth for our students. Care Days are available each Monday except for professional development days. They're housed at Rebecca Boone. We open our doors at 7:40 to 3:15. And then Latchkey is available for those families who would need before the 7:40 or the after the 3:15. We have four staff members and we currently have 131 students enrolled and breakfast and lunch is available. Care Day has been funded by what we call the School H Community Grant. We received $243,000 and that's over three years. So we are in our, this is our second grant cycle, so we, this is our fifth year. So we've got the first three years, we reapplied. And this, we're in the second year of a second cycle. So we have $80,000 basically a year to run the Care Day program. That implements the STEM programming. We have staffing supplies and professional development. And then it allows the Care Day program to be free of charge for all district students. Some other grants that we've written through Care Day, we have a micro grant through the Missouri After School Network. We purchased a Glowforge and materials. I'm still learning how to use those, so more to come later. We're going to be working on Christmas ornaments coming up soon. We've also just received recently a subsidy grant. So we do, we do take subsidy payments from the state. So with that, there was ARPA funding and we were able to get the grant. So we received $70,000 from that grant. And so what we did is, I was like, how about a STEM programmer? Because I would really like to see that STEM being integrated in Care Day and Latchkey. So thank you guys for approving that. November, we started the STEM programming. Mrs. Hoffman has been working with our students. For Latchkey and Care Day, it's 10 hours a week. So Care Day, four hours, and then she goes to each of the Latchkey sites one day a week for two hours, doing all kinds of things. Right here, she's working on STEM circuits with the kids. That was last week I was able to come in and sneak a picture with her. Also, in, back in, back last school year, the 2024 Missouri Department of Conservation bus grant. The grant provided reimbursement for bus transportation for our students to visit a Missouri State Park. We visited Quiver River on a Care Day in May and we had all kinds of hands activity, hands-on activities and snakes and all kinds of. Always snakes. Always snakes at Quiver River, yes. Financial overview is the $80,000 a year for the three years. So we are, like I said, we are in year two of our grant cycle and then hoping to reapply. And the biggest thing with Care Day is our community partnerships, that we just love to work with members of the community for them to come in and just share all the amazing things that our community has to offer. University of Missouri Extension Center comes in and does 4-H lessons, health and nutrition, gardening lessons. We will be receiving a greenhouse that will be delivered on Tuesday at Rebecca Boone. It's an eight-by-twelve greenhouse with a solar-powered vent fan, so we're really excited. We'll be growing all kinds of things. Warranted Aquatic Center always comes in and does safety around water lessons with our students. Scenic Regional Library comes in and does storytime with our kindergarten students. Allison Bayless is an author from Kansas City and she's going to be coming in on, in December to read to the students. So that's very exciting. And St. Louis Dairy Council, we do the Adopt a Cow program, grass-to-glass dairy program. Girl Scouts come in and do STEM lessons. We have local hairstylists that come in and do free haircuts for our students. Boy Scouts came in and did the STEM trailer. And the Missouri After School Network does the mobile STEM programming that we have scheduled for April this year.
What questions do you have?
That's our tower garden. That was a grant funded a few years ago.
Can I, can I sign up?
Sure. Any Monday, come on over.
Thank you so much for all the delightful things that the kids are getting to experience and not just sit and, you know, wait through the Monday, but they're getting to be up and moving and learning and connecting with our community, with one another. And so I'm very grateful.
Thanks, Dr. Ross.
Thank you. Thank you.
Discipline and safety.
Dr. Ross?
Be Dr. Ross.
Follow that, buddy.
Yeah, I was gonna say spoiler alert, there will be no talk of grants in this, in this presentation. So I don't know how I get ordered the way I do. So we'll move forward with student, staff, and school safety, going through trends and discipline and things that we're trying to do to make our district a safer, safer place. So the goal that we've been continuing to work with through CSIP, again, we're focusing on the status goal of trying to keep as many kids in that tier one, zero-to-two office referrals, improving, increasing that number every year from the previous year. Action steps, these continue to be the same. These are the ones that are detailed in the CSIP. So I won't go through those again unless you have any questions. I'll be happy to speak to them. But just getting to actual numbers, looking through the first three months of the school year over the last three years, we're pretty much on pace with where we're at last year. It gets a little bit brighter of a picture than this as we'll, when we get to the top five referral categories. Just because the reason why our numbers are where they're at is there's certain, I guess, initiatives taken by buildings where they're really honing in on certain behaviors, like tardiness specifically. And so they're, they're doing things in order to catch it more often, which is resulting in higher numbers. The fact that we're still below last year is great, but especially when put in context of our top five categories. This is just how it trends over the course of the school year. So we've been below last year, peaked a little bit over October. October, we have more school, days of school than any other month, so it's naturally going to peak there. But between now and January, things hopefully will be lightening up on our buildings, which only makes sense because we don't have a lot of school days in those months. But moving forward, so this, this is what I was referencing, our top five codes from last year. When we take a look comparing this year where they are at, again, tardiness and truancies dominate the landscape. I mean, that's just, that's just what we deal with. And this is almost exclusively a six-through-12 problem. Although when the last CSIP meeting that we had in preparing for the new CSIP cycle, I had an elementary teacher in my group and she was talking about how there are concerns about tardiness at the elementary level that, you know, they want to discuss. I had another teacher email me about that. So when the discipline committee meets next semester, I'm anticipating that to be a topic of discussion, you know, how to address tardiness at the elementary level, which is going to be a completely separate beast because elementary kids don't typically take themselves to school.
Right.
But that, all that said, the numbers of tardies are up. But again, that's, Blackhawk Middle School especially, they've really targeted tardiness this year. Really, not, not because they had bad numbers previous year, but because they're trying to create an expectation of you need to be on time for stuff, for students as they go up through and into the high school. So they've initiated tardy sweeps between each class. And so they're rounding up more kids, you know, in order to make sure that they are on time for class. And so that has resulted in that higher number, which again is almost exclusively six-through-12. But the, the other classroom type, so I lumped together a group of referral categories. Insubordination, insubordination with the cell phone, which is referenced up there. DDIS is insubordination, that other acronym that I have up there. And then also disruption. So those, along with abusive language, those tend to happen in the classroom. So I call those the classroom referrals. And so with that, we see a lot of encouraging things, especially insubordination in regards to the cell phone. You know, the, the procedures that, and again, this is primarily secondary, but that those buildings are adopting are really seeing a difference in student behavior, especially at the middle school level, like of the 50 that exist now, only two of those were from the middle school and they've gone. You know, they've done the, you're going to put this in a bucket when you walk in the room, you know? And so they've taken a little bit of a harder stance than the high school has. But, but again, even the high school, you know, we're seeing less than half, almost a third of, you know, where we were at this time last year. And that's even with regular insubordination, you know? When you combine insubordination with the cell phone and just regular insubordination, you put them together, you know, we're, we're about half of where we were last year. And that's district-wide, but that's encouraging to see. And I don't think it's because anybody is not submitting referrals, but I think that it's truly because buildings are taking targeted steps towards managing those behaviors. Physical aggression is another one that is encouraging considering that we are at total across the district, 112. We were at 136 last year with outside placement kiddos. The 112 includes outside placement. So we've seen, we've seen a positive decrease in that category as well. Use of language is about the same. But these are the categories that our buildings in particular are addressing. And so to see improvement in these is encouraging. In terms of our goal progress, we did not hit the goal. So, you know, when we're talking about kiddos receiving zero-to-two referrals and you saw the, you know, just the, I guess, the comprehensive nature of tardies and truancies, that, that's what's sending kids over this, you know, two, two-referral cliff. And once you're out of that tier one, you never get back. And so that's the nature of a status goal. And so while we didn't make this, you know, something else that we talked about at the CSIP committee was, you know, maybe what we should be looking at is, okay, so we understand at the end of quarter one, we've got this, about 6% of kids that have more than two referrals. What happens to them in quarter two? Can we keep them from getting another three referrals? Because ultimately, that's the goal of a disciplined program, is that you're changing behavior. And so we're, we're looking at changing that goal to then track that. So if these kiddos that, you know, are, you know, getting in trouble first quarter, can we get them, you know, back with the other 94% of our students at the end, by the end of second quarter? So in the next CSIP cycle, we're going to be taking a look at that and, you know, see, see if we can target that and achieve this goal. Even though, I mean, 94% of our students having less than two referrals this time of year. I mean, we're blessed with very good kids in this district. We just are. So things that we're doing in the buildings in terms of discipline, there's, you know, we continue with MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. This is very similar to PBIS. You know, a lot of these acronyms just sort of change, although they are separate programs. They are very, very similar in their focus and their scope. So a lot of these things, again, are just continuing. Blackhawk, their building made a commitment on top of cell phones with all other insubordination, certain things that they were going to do. Again, I mentioned the tardy sweeps targeting student tardiness. The high school, they have, they're, they're working specifically with, you know, having, having an adult mentor for these students that are having an issue repeatedly. They think that that, you know, caring adult is going to be what is going to alter behavior there. So they're, they're running that out this year and we'll, we'll see how effective that is. All of our elementary buildings have very strong PBIS systems in place. You know, you walk into those buildings and, you know, you see all the expectations, we're going to be safe, you know, respectful. They're, they're all a little bit different. But, you know, those matrices are in place. You know, practices are well-reversed with all the teachers and, I mean, they're doing great things every year. In terms of safety, some things that we are taking a look at this year. Every year, we have a, we have a district safety committee that meets. That's administration from every building. That's all of our SROs. Mr. Tennen joined us, you know, because our students are on buses, so we want to make sure those are safe as well. We've done a number of things over the years. This year, what our focus really, really, I guess, sat on was now that we have, you know, because last year, last year, we did have a grant, but now that we are beyond that grant and the purchases that were made through that grant, now it's, we really want to empower buildings to take ownership of the safety of their site. So we have a, a site assessment tool that we kind of took a look at this previous summer. SROs and administration, starting this upcoming summer, you know, will tour their building and it walks through, you know? Is there, is the vegetation, you know, in a place so that when kids are playing, you have view? You know, you can see, and it's just gonna put those leaders in charge of building safety in a place where, you know, they can consider all of those things on top of, you know, the personal expertise that our SROs are going to bring to that, to that situation anyway. So we will formally kick those off this upcoming summer. We'll also take a look at, and this is, this is on the agenda for later tonight, but looking at upgrading the safety on our buses. So with the software that we're currently examining, part of that is going to be a GPS feature, which will then enable us to track the buses at all times, to know exactly where they are in real time. And then with this particular one, especially with accountability of attendance and who is on every bus as well. So those are going to be our posts as we move through this year. Depending on your questions, that's, that's all I have.
I, I think that the focuses of tardiness and, and cell phones, I think that it has so many, like, ways that it impacts behavior and it impacts safety as well. So like, if students aren't in the classroom and they're out, then more things can happen, like bullying and just other places that aren't being observed. And so I'm just really grateful for trying to bring those kids into the classroom, they can be learning, but also that they can be safe. And so it's all connected. And so I know it's probably so much work for these buildings to, to take a hard stance on it, but I think it is going to keep our kids safer.
They, all of our building administrators are extremely deliberate in the steps that they're taking. Because, I mean, you could focus on a million things, you know? And, but they are, they're, deliberate is the right word. Like, they're very, they're doing what they do for a reason, and so it is, it's good.
Maybe to add to what, what Sarah was saying.
Maybe to add to what Sarah was saying. I think it's encouraging to see the numbers go down, but I think what's more encouraging is just to hear the consistency of the tardiness and the cell phone policy being enforced. Because I think it probably just stands to reason that the more consistent we are across the board, the easier it's going to be to enforce it, right?
Right.
If only 10% of the teachers enforce the cell phone policy of put your phone in the basket when you come in, right? When they go to the other 80% or 90% of their classes, they're not going to like that.
That's one of the biggest, yeah, that's one of the biggest challenges.
Everybody has to buy in for it to be really effective.
And same with tardiness. They're getting it day after day after day, eventually, they should learn.
Hopefully.
Let's not do this anymore. They're coming to, to retard us. No, I'm encouraged by that, that's awesome.
And I just appreciate the effort that everybody makes. Like you said, everybody's dedicated to trying to do what they can on that. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Guess we're ready for the finance report.
Yep, it's our monthly update here. We're getting to the time of year. This is kind of where cash flow gets low. We're hoping for a big jump, not hoping for it, expecting that. When people pay their taxes.
I've not got my tax bill.
Pay your taxes, people.
So, anyway, so hopefully that comes soon. So, anyway, here's our operating, where we are right now. So revenues this year, 22% compared to 21 last year, so pretty close. Expenses are almost exactly the same. Fund balances are down just slightly this year at this point, but, but pretty close. So you can kind of see our graph there is right on track with exactly where we were last year for the most part. So we're getting to that point in the year where we'll be low on, our low point of the year of fund balances. And then we'll get, receive our taxes in January, and we'll see that jump up. So I'm just waiting on those local taxes to come in. Revenues, just where money's coming from. Locals up slightly, counties up slightly. State is up the most because we received a double payment from early childhood special education. And then federal courses down. We haven't received our payment for our title funds and, of course, some stimulus. It's just the timing on it. There are some issues with E-Pegs at the state level up. So we'll, we'll always trend behind in the federal side, but we're, we're doing, everything's in line. So total, we're, we're up a little bit, about $800,000. Expenses, so we're spending more in salaries and benefits. Purchase services are, are up a little bit. Supplies are also up slightly. So that's about where we are on expenses. And then our fund balance in capital four, it's $1.1 billion in there. And a new is bond issue. Where are we at on that? It's about, let's do our cash flow on this. So right now, our cash flow, we have $9.4 billion in bond money that we have in hand right now today. So that's finances.
Next up is the consent agenda. I would enter the motion.
Move the approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Jeff.
Awesome.
Thank you, Deanna. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. And we have no old business, I believe? Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, so we are into new business. And the first thing up is the summer school proposal.
Yes, we heard from Dr. Stanek on that, her presentation.
So does anyone have any questions about anything for summer school? I think we all learned a few years ago that it's definitely worth the gift card thing. We tried that little experiment that was not, that was pretty obvious that we needed to do that.
Yeah, it was also an experiment in Morba, but it was just a tight time.
Yeah, but we're, we're coming out ahead, definitely. So that was obvious.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the summer school proposal as presented.
Thank you, Rich.
Awesome.
No, you were right. I didn't wish.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the summer school proposal as presented. Summer school and enrichment camp, everything, all of that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Stanek. And then we have the calendar, ooh, calendar for next school year.
Yeah, this is the same calendar we've been using for a number of years now. Next year's calendar, we, spring break is always kind of the question mark, and we match up with Washington School District because our kids go to Port Rivers and for Botack. And so we match up with that. And that adds Good Friday in that spring break, which creates a floating snow day. So the first snow day next year would be just a day off. And that would be a floating snow day in there.
A classic.
You can call it however you like, yeah.
All right. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the calendar proposal? Does it have graduation date on it?
Yes.
Yeah, probably the six.
Six, June, mhm. That's always a big question, but it's a year and a half from now. Right? If there are no questions or discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
On the, on the graduation backup time, is that in the morning of the sixth then?
Yes, in the morning. So we'll try to look at the weather, try to say, hey, listen, we'll try to do it in the evening. That's plan A, but if it's going to rain, we'll try to do it in the morning and get people to notice because families are going to be in town on that day, most likely, anyway. Our goal is just to have it in the evening. But it seems like we always have weather to contend with.
I'll move the approval of the calendar as presented.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll second.
Thank you, Carolyn. There's been a motion and a second to approve the calendar for the '25, '26 school year as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. And then we have some contracts for the construction of the new Daniel Boone Elementary, which we broke ground for this afternoon.
Yeah, what a fun event that was. Thank you, that was great. So, anyway, so what we've done.
Chopping mud.
Yeah, exactly. Right, so what we did since last month, since we had our little bid, we've been working on getting contract language squared away. So our attorney had a few comments on that, nothing substantial. But there are just some small amendments that they're recommending. And also, GSS is agreement with that as well. So this isn't going to delay the project in any way. So, but I would recommend that we approve the, the contracts as amended by our attorneys.
Are there any questions or discussions on that, a discussion on any of that?
I will move the approval of the contracts as presented.
With the amendments.
Yeah. You need to say something about amendments.
Let me find that part. Then I will fix it.
7.4 million, I don't know.
Oh, 7.3.
I know.
Okay, I move the approval of the contracts as amended by our attorney.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the contracts as amended by our attorney. Any further discussion or any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now we've got high school roof project 2024.
Yep, so we've got a little bit of roof at the high school. Seems like we're always placing part of the roof for the high school. But this would be basically where the band room essentially is where this roof section would be. So, so we'd be working on that.
When would this project be taking place?
Most likely in the summertime. If we can get it done sooner, we probably will try.
Looks like we had six bids, so then one clear low bid.
I'll make a motion to approve the high school roofing project as presented.
Thank you, Deanna.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sarah. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the high school roofing project as presented. Who was that low bid? Sorry, I lost again.
It's KB and others.
Okay. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
I'm going to say Carolyn.
Okay, I had it in front of me, and then I didn't. And then we have a staffing plan amendment.
Yeah, so we keep having new students come in that require special education services. And so as they come in, we need to service them. So we've had about, since after school started, we've had about 35 new students come in. And then we've had about 135 kids, so it's about 25% of our, the population. The new is also needing special education support. So we're required to provide that support. We just want to make sure we are updating our staffing plan as we're doing that.
Want me to do that again?
You may.
I will move the approval of the staffing plan as presented.
Thank you, Ginger. Thank you, Ginger. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the staffing plan amendment as presented. Any questions or discussion?
I'm just hoping that we can continue to welcome them in our district by providing what they need.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Fund four transfer, this is something we have to do every year, right, Greg?
We will from here moving forward, as long as we design our budget the same way we have been. In, in years past, when budget was really tight, we put most of the money in fund one because we couldn't afford to not do that. So now we're able to buy buses and do those projects, put roofs on the school because we're in much better financial shape. But this is kind of an interesting one because we, this is something we didn't know. So as we were preparing our budget for the auditors, we were double checking things, getting to the state, making sure things squared away. We realized that there was a law from 2009, '10 that you have, have to put all your classroom trust fund money into fund one above a certain threshold. So for us, it's about $1 million. So it's getting years-round numbers here. So it's about $1 million. And so anything above $1 million has to go to fund, fund one. And so what we had, had done is we put all of our classroom trust fund money, which is about $1.2 million, in fund four. So that 200 billion, 200,000 roughly dollars has to go to the operations. So we just need to move the same amount of money from a different account back to fund four to make our budget the way we wanted to do it before. We're showing all the money going to fund four. So that was a law from 9, 2009, '10. And we just haven't had that much money to work with. We've never gotten over that threshold. So this is a new, new situation for us. So this would just be a fund transfer to basically balance the budget from '23, '24 with what we originally planned, what we wanted to have. But we have to have a motion to show that we moved that money from fund one to fund four. If that makes sense.
Yes. Clear as mud. Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the fund transfer resolution as presented.
Thank you, Rich.
I'll second.
Thank you, Carolyn. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the funds transfer resolution as presented. Does anyone have any questions or is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we're going to talk about the bus software.
Right, so we have a current software, it's a program called VersaTrans. And it's not really working well within the campus. Almost every day, our, our staff has to go in and update and make changes. And it's just not, not working well. And so we're looking at new software. And at the same time, we're looking to upgrade our services to our families. Currently, what we have, there's no GPS, so parents can't really, the only way to know where the bus is is call bus garage. Maybe talk to somebody, and they radio, where are you? And, well, I'm one minute away from whatever bus stop, or two minutes away, or 15 minutes away, or half hour away. And so, you know, that definitely takes time away from our employees. And so what we're looking to do is upgrade our services. So this would be a system where parents would have login. You could just go to our website and find GPS where the buses are. But you could login, find where, where parents are, where the bus is. And so that would take some workload off our staff to do that. And so we're asking to, to upgrade that, something that works better with them in a campus, something that is a better service to our families. And this is the one that, that we like. Dr. Rossi, that you want to add to that?
No, I mean, those are really the, the primary benefits of it. Yeah, it would be a separate app that parents have access to.
And you may say, I have no idea to this question. Do you know in other schools, is this a popular thing that other schools utilize?
You know, GPS on buses has been something people talk about for a long time. And some districts have it, some don't. You know, I think people that do have it really like it. In others that don't, it's mainly just an expense issue that's kind of like us. We've been looking at this for a long time. We're like, I don't really necessarily have the money to do that. But at this point, with the software kind of not working, we have to upgrade pretty much the other softwares we're looking at with the same cost. So this would give us that service for essentially the same cost of a new software program. Anyway, so to answer your, your question, it's a mixed bag. So, you know, some have it. But most people who do have GPS services on their buses, parents really like the access.
Yeah, I see the benefits, especially on inclement weather days or when there's accidents that go on, not, I'm not saying the bus accident, I mean, an accident and traffic, warranted level of traffic happening.
Right, the first week of school.
It'd be really ideal for parents to, to know where their kid is and how much longer it could possibly be.
The society we live in, we live in a now moment.
Right. So this is a little bit more, is much more expensive than what we're paying now. So everyone's aware, you know, I think we pay about $7,000 a year roughly for our current software program. And this would be an increase, a considerable increase. But we can make it work with the budget, it'll be fine.
Is there an annual cost to the software?
That would be the annual cost, yeah.
So this is to start on March the 1st of 2025?
Boy, that's the timeline, yes. And this, that's when we get all the, we, we launch it next school year. But we would have all the software.
Transferring.
Transfer, all that stuff, this, start this, or spring, sorry.
And the, the contract we have now, or is that going to be up?
It'll, yeah, it'll, well, into, into the school year.
So it looks like you have the contracts for three years, four months.
Yeah.
Is anyone ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
Thank you, Rich.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the contract as presented for the bus software. Are there any more questions or any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. New minimum wage.
Yes, so proposition A passed on November 5th. And that moves minimum wage on January 1st to 2025. We have 23 employees that are below that threshold. And so we are not required to pay minimum wage, but I just think we should pay whatever the minimum wage is. So, anyway, the 23 employees, what we would do is just move them up to 1375. And those would be the only employees that would move, would be those employees that are below that, they'd move up to 1375. And then also the same, the new proposition that passed, it moves to $15 the next year, but we've worked that through negotiations this upcoming summer. So, or for next year, we've worked on that through negotiations. So we just recommend that at this time, starting on January 1st, we move everyone that's below 1375 to 1375.
I think it's difficult enough to fill those positions at the starting rate if, if we do keep up with minimum wage because we have to compete with other places. So it seems to make sense to me to do that.
I'll make a motion to make the minimum wage in the district 1375 per hour, starting on January 1st.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to set the minimum wage for the district at 1375 per hour, starting January 1st. Motion's been made and seconded to set the minimum wage for the district at thirteen seventy-five per hour, starting January first. Any questions or further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay. We are, the motion passes, and the next thing is fence bids.
Yep, so this is our fence bids for the property that we have. So this is where we're gonna do our construction of our new facility. So this would be, put a vinyl fence between the neighborhood and the new school, and we'd like to get going on that right away, so that'll hopefully keep construction noise down and dust as much as possible, you know, for the neighborhood. And then we'd come back and do the chain link fence at a later time. So, uh, it would be vinyl on, on the side of the neighborhood, and then chain link around the rest of the property. So this would be, secure the property for students, and it'd be, be a nice thing. So we would just like to go ahead and get, move on that, so we're recommending the, the low bid of custom dot design fence.
And we had four bids on that one. And we have gates written into them.
Yes, yes, there'll be a gate, essentially, yeah.
Gates.
Yeah. Yeah, there'll be a gate as, on the vinyl side, right by where the cemetery is in the neighborhood there, so, that, that'll be where we go to get balls to get kicked over the fence.
Will you entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, I can't find it.
It's in the night.
Something that I have to scroll down. There's that. Uh, approve the recommendation that custom design fence complete the perimeter fencing project.
Thank you, Carolyn. I'll second it. Thank you, Ginger. You have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation that custom design fence complete the perimeter fencing project at the new school location. Is there any discussion, or does anyone have a question? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We have a whole list of policy first reads in this one.
Yeah, so these are all MSBA recommendations, except the very last one, uh, which is kind of a combination of MSBA and the district. Uh, and the district and MSBA work together to write some language that non-medical personnel are prohibited from recommending medicine to parents. It's a practice that we do, it's just not written down anywhere. So it's just a recommendation. And all the rest of them are, are MSBA recommendations to align to essentially new laws or, yeah, pretty much new laws.
Does anyone have any questions about any of those?
I do on GP one, which is the substitute teachers receive a survey every day.
Yes.
So is that, that doesn't happen today, right?
No, it doesn't, they get a survey now.
Oh, so it's not changing the way we practice?
No, right. It's just putting in a policy that aligns to the law. We have a following to the law, it just wasn't in policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Obviously, we can discuss these more fully at the next meeting, or if anybody comes up with a question before then, we can talk about that then, because we're not taking any action tonight. So we, that puts us down to miscellaneous, and the first thing is celebrations, Mr. Martin.
Well, I was gonna say, don't bring Alexa roughing Matt Craven, but Dr. Case, don't go that way. That's awesome, though. That's pretty cool. And if you didn't see, Coach Koper was named the GAC Coach of the Year. I think it was today, actually, and that's pretty cool, and a whole bunch of players have got those. And we have the big championship game tomorrow night, uh, so I could give all kinds of shouts out, but I'm gonna give a shout out to our chain game, because we have a phenomenal group of gentlemen who volunteer night in and night out, year after year, uh, not for any reason except for the love of the game and the love of the kids, and they really enjoy running the sideline. Just a couple of them, Michael, Larry Quarter, Mike Wright, Don Huff, uh, have been doing it all seasons for a few years now. We even let some, uh, visitors like, uh, Dave, uh-
Owens.
Dave.
Owens.
Oh, Dave Owens, yeah. Dave Owens, and even Keith Hupp came in, you know, he's a Frank Towne boy, but we let those guys help out when needed. And of course, their captain Eddie Meyer went, went help me, and, but those guys are all high, you know, warrant graduates. They, they, they love the Warriors, and they, they go highly, and they can't mess up, because they get recognized real quick if they mess up. No one else in their name totally mess up. They do a great job down there, and it's not an easy job, and you're putting yourself in danger, because those boys are fast and furious on the sidelines, and I appreciate everything they do, you know, so.
Um, I wanted to celebrate our FFA from our high school. Um, this was the fourth year in a row that the FFA members went trick-or-treating for food on Halloween, and, um, that food wound up at Agape Food Pantry, and they brought in eight hundred and forty pounds of food. The van was full. It was really awesome. I think people are getting used to them doing that, and people in town and some of the subdivisions are kind of watching for them more. Agape happens to have these orange bags that we ask people to collect food in, like at churches and different groups, and they always get those and carry those around on Halloween, because it seems to go right along with it, and they can show that that's who they're collecting food for, so. I'm just always really proud of that group, because they do a lot of different community service projects, and that one affects me specifically, because I'm also on the board at Agape, so we really appreciate those young people and their leadership.
This year, we received the Purple Star recognition as a district, and part of that is doing Veterans Day assemblies and programs at all of our buildings. And so, from Hopewell Academy, Anna and I am just so proud of our district for doing that. I was talking with a friend as I was headed to my kid's Veterans Day assembly, and she was in a different state. She was just so thrilled that our school still honors veterans in that way, and so it's not, it, it is not done at every school. It is not done across the country, and so I'm thrilled that not only is it done here, but it's done well, and it's done consistently, and it's done district-wide, and so I'm, I'm very grateful for all of the people that have to, to put in all of the work to do these programs, to help our children see what the military does for our country, and then I'm so grateful that our community shows up and that they, that they attend these and build that, yeah, just that patriotism. And, and of course, I'm grateful for all the people who have served in our community that are giving even more of their time to our students, and I'm just, it just was a wonderful celebration that I, that I witnessed, and I'm just grateful that our school district values that. Another thing that we did at Warrior Ridge that was really fun was, in the middle of October, we partnered with Utterly Delicious, and the students designed ice cream flavors. Each grade had one that went and competed, and students got to show up, order those ice cream flavors, and vote on which one was the best, and fifth grade won, and then they all got an ice cream party. And so, it was super fun to see the community partnership and see the creativity. You could have seen these flavor combinations that these kids came up with. It was super fun, and so it was a fun, community, family, school partnership night, and it was delicious, so.
That's cool. And if you haven't seen the new addition to the Veterans Memorial up here, I encourage you to stop in and see it. I did my thing from Sunday up there, and the Bill of Rights, the Constitution, and, uh, this-
Declaration.
Declaration of Independence, I mean, I, I have been, I have seen them in person at National Archives, and I'm telling you, this is just as good, and it is really fantastic, and every student and every parent ought to take their time to stop by there and see that, because that is probably one of the nicest Veterans Memorial things I've ever seen across the country, and I know a lot of folks that worked very hard on that.
One more thing on the FFA, a bunch of kids went to the Area Fall Speaking and Rituals contest last night, and Jeff won't say this, because it's his daughter, but his daughter Ava Schneider won alternate in the Pork Producers speaking, it was speech contest. So, um, she was chosen as alternate, but we had a bunch of kids who participated in that, and that's always a good opportunity for them.
Yeah. It's rocking.
Anybody else have anything? Um, if not, we need to talk about our workshop topics for the December fifth work session, which we haven't had a work session for a while, but we need to talk about the APR and negotiations and personnel at that meeting, correct?
Right, we anticipate APR being released on November twenty-fifth, we'll go over that, uh, which is our annual school performance report. Uh, but then also, we need to have a closed session to talk about negotiations.
Okay. And then we need to set the next regular meeting. Oh, we'll start the work session at five, correct?
That works for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, if you make a motion, please.
I make a motion to set the next regular Board of Education meeting for December twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to set the next regular Board of Education meeting for December twelfth of twenty twenty-four. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes, and then we need to set closed session.
I make a motion to set the next closed Board of Education meeting to immediately proceed the open session on December twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Second that.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to set the next closed Board of Education meeting to immediately proceed the open session on December twelfth, twenty twenty-four. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I knew it. I knew you were so moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion, uh, meeting's adjourned, motion too. Thanks, everybody.